Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, I'd like to please turn off your cell phones or other electronic devices to avoid any disruptions. If anyone here is planning to present testimony, make sure you've signed up in the back, or if you haven't signed up online already. Anyway, it's Wednesday, the 25th day of May, and the time is 6:00, time set for this public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
There are no changes to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is Lenny Bus. I will open the public hearing on case number 202200400-VAC-Lenny Bus, a variance and accessory use to construct a detached secondary dwelling, et cetera. First, we'll hear a report from our staff.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. The item before you is a variance and accessory use application to convert an existing home into a secondary dwelling. The applicant is Lenny Bus. The subject property is located in southwest Boise area, their area of impact, at 8203 West Tarp Drive. It is a five-acre parcel zone, southwest community residential. This aerial map of the property shows the existing home proposed to be converted to a secondary dwelling. The property has front on both Tarp Drive and Lone Tree Way. Shown here is the existing home to be converted to the secondary dwelling, as well as the elevations for the new home, which is under construction. The site plan depicts the location of the existing and new homes, so the existing home is, sorry, I've got a lot of things open here, over here towards the corner of Tarp and Lone Tree Way, and the new home is more in the middle of the property. Sorry, I'm waiting for something to pop up here. There we go. Regarding the variance, the applicant is requesting to exceed the maximum 900 square feet standard for secondary dwellings, as well as remove the requirement the secondary dwelling be occupied by the property's owner's, property owner's family, or an employee. Staff is in support of these requests for the following reasons. So, in the staff report, it details that Mr. Bus went through a, what's called a one-time division process with staff over a year ago, and was successfully created two 2.5-acre parcels out of the original five-acre parcel. And that is what's allowed in the RSW district. It's 2.5 acres minimum. As a condition of approval, he was required to talk to Central District Health about a septic, and unfortunately, Central District Health determined that the property couldn't support a new septic system. And so, this is in the area of the county, as I mentioned before, southwest Boise, where sewer lines exist adjacent to properties, but the city is not allowing people to connect based on the moratorium they put into effect nearly 10 years ago. So, through a back and forth as to how this could be navigated, as I mentioned before, the permit was on, the house was under construction, so the need to figure out septic and sewer was obviously pressing. Based on the characteristics of the site, the fact that the septic was not possible, as well as the hardship associated with City of Boise's requirements for sewer, Mr. Bus was required to basically put the two parcels back into one for five acres, and City of Boise would then grant him sewer. So, through our zoning code, the only option to allow for the construction of the new home and the conversion of the smaller home was a secondary dwelling, and as the existing home didn't meet the requirements for secondary dwellings, the variance was applied for as well. So, that's kind of an overview of how we got to this point. I will say that we heard from several agencies on this. Boise Sewer was obviously a very big one. The packet contains a letter from the mayor of Boise basically saying that they're not granting new extensions to properties, so that was something that, you know, we required Mr. Bus to go to the highest level to figure out if he could get sewer for the new home and allow for the two 2.5-acre parcels. And ultimately, their decision was no. It has to be a five-acre parcel, and that's what we landed on. But Boise will allow the homes to connect. Our building official had no objections, our engineer had no objections, ACHD had no objections, and the project is supported by the Boise Conference of Plan. As I mentioned in the staff report, this area of the county has multiple properties with primary homes and secondary dwellings. It actually even has some properties with multiple kind of primary dwellings in terms of being larger than 900 square feet, so it certainly is in conformance with kind of the surrounding area. And as you look at this map back here, you'll see there are several smaller lot properties as well in the area. So, again, all that led to staff's recommendation of approval. And so, with that, I'll stand for any questions, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, thanks, Leon, for that presentation. So, what's the reasoning behind allowing them to hook up Boise Sewer? You know, if it's still two homes, it's still two homes, so what difference does it make if it's one or two parts?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, it's a unique situation, one that I'm sure Mr. Bus might be able to tell you. What he went through to try to get that done, they just will not allow the creation of new lots and new extensions of that sewer. So, if it's an existing lot, which this property had access to one hookup, they'll allow that to happen. I think they even went so far as to say that they would allow both homes to connect to the sewer connection, but they won't allow for the division of land and the creation of new sewer extensions, so. And it's a hard and fast rule. It's a moratorium that has been in effect for a long time, and it's really changed the way Southwest has developed, so.
And then, secondly, is this in the southwest area where the wells are drying up?
Chairman Commissioners, no, it's not. I actually talked to our county engineer on that, so it's not in the area of groundwater management concern, or the area where quantity is a concern. It is, and it's not in an area of drilling concern or a nitrate priority area, it is in a groundwater concern area, which as I understand it is arsenic and uranium levels, or at the level where ongoing monitoring and things like that are required by IDWR. I think also, the existing well is 115 feet deep right now, but yeah, it's not in an area where the wells are a problem based on speaking to Zach Kirk, our county engineer.
And the existing well is 150 feet?
115 feet is what.
15? Oh, that's, and how far is it away from the Lake Hazel five-mile area where we're seeing the wells, our problems?
I will have to venture a guess at that, because I am not, I'm not 100% certain. It looks to be a ways. This is kind of a major intersection, that's definitely not the Lake Hazel five-mile area, so.
What are the main roads going to this property?
Uh, Tarp and Lone Tree Way, and then, I guess you wanted to know like-
Ones that I would recognize.
Even larger. Great question. I might defer to the applicant to tell you how he gets to his house, so that you can figure out what roads are. I only know the local roadways, I apologize, I'm not aware of the collectors or arterials in the area, so.
That's okay, we can, yeah, we can ask him. And then also, the new home that's under construction, does that have all the right building permits?
Yes.
They go through the process for that?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, yes. It's been reviewed by our building department recently, and it's being inspected, and it's, yeah, meets all the code.
Okay. And then you said that the secondary structure will exceed the maximum of 900 feet, right?
It will, yes. It'll be, I think about 1180 is where that one ends up. There is a basement area that's being used outside of the secondary dwelling for storage, but yeah, 1180 is the size of the intended secondary dwelling area.
Okay. And then, so, they're asking it to remove the request of the second dwelling being occupied by a family member, correct?
They are, yeah. As we understand it, it's currently been rented to a tenant for five or more years, so I think, again, the applicant kind of explained the situation there, but yeah, that is also something they're asking relief from.
Okay. And aren't we changing that in our upcoming code?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, we have contemplated doing that. Obviously, that's still a draft code, and we have to go through the adoption process, but that is one thing that we've looked at, and a lot of jurisdictions in the area have lifted that requirement largely in response to housing need and things like that, so.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for now.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the staff? Not at this time. Okay, thank you. Is Mr. Bus in the audience? Do you want to speak? You're welcome to present your case if you'd like.
Well, I think he did a pretty good job of it.
Okay, well, you don't, you don't need to say anything.
No, I'm just saying, I think, Leon, it's been quite an adventure, but yeah, I think you described it pretty good.
Okay.
Quite an adventure.
Quite an adventure. I can understand that, yes, I can understand, yes. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this before I close this public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing on application number 202200400-VAC-Lenny Bus. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, according to our staff, I think they did a really good job kind of outlining what falls into code right now, and then the things that we're going to have to just kind of make a decision on. They're putting it back into five acres, correct? So, that's in the process, and that will be part of a condition of approval, or do we need to make that?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, they have already returned it to a five-acre parcel.
So, we don't need to worry about that, okay. And I think the only thing that we would need to really discuss on the record is just waiving the requirement that a secondary dwelling be occupied by a family member. So, I think, for me, we're, I'm looking at hopefully changing that code because we have housing issues, and it looks like somebody's been living there anyway for five years, so there's a precedence that's been set. And it looks like we've got Boise City to agree to hook up the sewer right now. My only concern would be the 115-foot well. It's not that deep, so I would just state to the applicant that if you've got arsenic or nitrates, things like that, just have it checked periodically, have it checked at least once a year. Typically, you can put some reverse osmosis things on your tap water, your drinking water, and you're fine, but just keep an eye on it. So, I would be in favor of making a motion to approve it.
I'll accept the motion.
I'll make that motion to approve. Unless Commissioner Davidson had anything to add?
No, I think you summed it up pretty well.
I'll make that motion then to approve application 202200400-V-A-C-Lenny Bus. And based on findings of facts, conclusions of law, and the testimony that we heard here tonight, and the discussions by the board, I think that warrants an approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. You for the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now, in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Please, sir.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing on application number 202200072-S-SNL Planning Incorporated. We'll first hear a staff report.
Chairman Commissioners, project 202200072, Lurch subdivision, is a preliminary plat for two buildable lots in the rural residential district. The property is located at 8955 South Broken Wheel Lane and contains 24 acres. The two lots will be 13 and a half acres and 10 and a half acres, meeting the 10-acre minimum lot size of the rural residential district, and both lots are proposed to take access from South Broken Wheel Lane. There was one written objection to the application with concerns about the use and maintenance of the private road and the impact on wildlife. All responding agencies did approve of the application, including Idaho Fishing Game, FIRE, ACHD, and Central District Health. And as conditioned, the applicant will be required to submit an updated road users' maintenance agreement, signed by everyone who currently takes access off South Broken Wheel Lane, and that must be completed before approval of the final plat. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, Cory, is there someone that signed up to testify tonight regarding the wildlife and private road, or do you have more information on that?
Chairman Commissioner, there is someone signed up to testify tonight.
To that, okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Would the, okay. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Could you identify yourself for the record?
You'll have up to 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Sean Nickel, P.O., Box 1595 Eagle, 83616. Here tonight representing the Lurch family, and their subdividing of their 24 acres into two 10-plus acre lots within a new subdivision. Staff has done a great job at laying out the staff report, the conditions of approval. Your planning zoning commission did recommend approval. We did accept the conditions that were placed at that time. I do have one modification to one of the conditions based on the comments that we received, I actually received them today from the neighbor, neighboring property owner, it was dated, I think, May 18th, but we just got it today, regarding the concerns over the private road. I guess we might maybe let them talk first, and then I can come back up and do a rebuttal and propose my condition that would hopefully help the situation.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you will be able, you will be allowed a rebuttal after the testimony. Do we have Bill Roberts? Hi.
You'll have, yeah, up to three minutes.
Could you state your name for the record? You will have three minutes.
My name is Bill Roberts. I live on 8801 South Broken Wheel Lane. That's the private road in question. We have a lousy situation here. We have never had any maintenance done to this road since it was built. It's hard to get private road participants all in agreement. I bet you're familiar with that. Now I am. Adding three more entities to this road is just not good, and there's a commercial use that I'm really concerned about. There was 12 to 20 people maintaining a cell tower that's now accessing our road. That access was done unit, just by the one individual, no cooperation agreement, nothing. Excuse me, I have a dry throat. The man's been adversary all over the years, and I've lived there longer than anyone, and I won't cite all the altercations, but it would not work for all of us to agree on this private road. It was intended for the use of two subdivisions, and all the changes have been done by one individual without any agreement on the subdivisions parts. It's clear we're responsible for the maintenance, we're responsible for the usage too, and the type of usage. I'm asking that it get, the plat get resubmitted with access to the traditional use that was done for 30 years or so until this recent change from five-mile road. And that would just leave us out of it and leave some headaches out of it, and they will come, I'm assured of that. Another problem is we have mailbox concerns. A lady is real kind and letting us have our mailboxes pretty close to where we live, and that would avoid an hour a day going to the Kuna Post Office and picking up parcels and mail. Right now, it's overflowed. We had a nice, uniform, conforming mailbox platform, and now there's buckets with cement and posts, and it's adding on as each structure gets built out there. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't blame the private owner and say, hey, enough of this, we want this done, we want it out of here, and that would cause a real hardship. There's a whole lot of little trivial things, but to sum it up, it would be a real problem to add basically three entities using our road. And the commercial one, if we all did the same thing, it would not be a private road. If I opened up a little commercial platform about the same size as his platform, I understand. It would be a very busy road with a lot of maintenance issues. I just don't think it should be approved the way it is. We want it resubmitted with a five-mile or Hubbard Road access.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for clarification, Cory, you mentioned three entities, a commercial plus two residential. I don't see that on here.
Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, there is a cell tower, a conditional use for a cell tower that was approved for the property, so that is existing along with an existing home. There will only be two lots, but that third entity is the cell tower he's referring to.
Is the cell tower that was approved?
Yes.
Okay. Did we, did they get the road maintenance agreement? Did they get the owners to sign off on that to allow access for the cell tower maintenance?
Commissioner Kenyon, currently, the road users' maintenance agreement only lists the eight lots, so the two from Stagecoach, or the four from Stagecoach subdivision, and then the four from the Orlando subdivision. Those are the only lots that are included on the existing road users' maintenance agreement.
Do we have any easements that show who has legal right to the access to the road?
So, the initial easement was granted through one owner's property to Stagecoach subdivision, and then when Orlando subdivision was created, the Lurches granted another easement through their property to the Orlando subdivision, so that's how the easements were created for the road.
Are there any restrictions in the easements? Is it for private homes, or is it, commercials allowable?
So, the easements state that the, state those lots specifically and state it's for ingress and egress.
Does the easement state the cell tower?
Sorry, Chairman, the cell tower is not included on those easements.
So, the cell tower is not really legally able to use the lot they're held in, right?
Chairman, when the cell tower was approved, the initial access was being taken from 10-mile road for the property.
The initial access was taken from 10-mile, and now it's changed and is coming down the private road?
That's correct.
So, the issue is with the cell tower and not using their initial access that they were granted.
Which would be a code possibly-
That's a code violation, apparently. Okay.
It's into other territory, but I think-
Yeah, that's different, that's not the subject of tonight's hearing, but do we have anyone else that wants to speak to this issue? Okay, Sean, if you'd like to, oh, wait a minute, you have somebody else? Okay. And who would that be?
This is Rick Barry.
Say that again? Rick Barry, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay. If you'd like to speak to this issue, could you state your name for the record? And you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Rick Barry. I live at 8848 South Broken Wheel Lane. I won't need three minutes. I just want to support everything that Mr. Roberts said, and, you know, I, there is this, you know, there is an issue with this road being maintained, you know, and adding more people. I don't think anybody out here is in favor of adding more residences to this road, and I think that the applicant is going to benefit tremendously, you know, from resale value and that type of thing, from having access off of our paved road rather than the existing unpaved five-mile road that used to be the access, without, you know, ever contributing or paying any kind of premium like we all paid when we bought our properties. our properties. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a quick question, so what access are you recommending, that's the paved access, to the lot?
Broken Wheel Lane is paved, South Five Mile is not.
Oh, okay, I was thinking the opposite, because it's Five Mile Road, so, not paved and paved, okay, thank you. That helps, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the line, anyone else in the room? Okay, Sean, if you'd like to wrap it up, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So I guess the bottom line is that the Lurches do have legal access for their existing house, I believe the conditional use permit for the, for the cell tower, the access was from Five Mile through an easement through the property. I think over the years, the maintenance folks have decided to use Broken Wheel as the access to the cell towers, because the cell tower is closer to the private lane. My suggestion for the condition of approval, we would like to work with the neighbors, I think it's a benefit to the entire subdivisions to get an updated maintenance agreement, they will be adding another property owner to pay the cost of improvements and maintenance of that private road. However, to move this forward, if we could change condition number five in your, in your Exhibit A to state, it currently states the applicant shall submit an updated road users' maintenance agreement for South Broken Wheel Lane, I would like just to add, if access is taken from the lane for the new lot. I did talk to the Ada County Highway District this afternoon, and if we do not have legal access to that private road, they cannot deny us access off of Hubbard, and so we could request an access off of Hubbard for that new South lot that we're creating. I still want to try to work with the subdivisions, see if we can get a maintenance agreement amended and recorded, and if not, we would have access by ACHD off of Hubbard Road, and I think that would clear up most of the concerns.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So you don't know if you have legal access, the two lots have legal easement at this point, you're not sure?
They, well, they do have the easement for the existing house.
Yeah, but not for two lots?
Not for, not for the new lot, which, again, I just found this out today, I don't even know.
That sounds like we probably need to take.
I don't even know if the Lurches, because they haven't lived there for that, I mean, lived there for.
That's probably why the, the item number five, to get an updated road maintenance agreement, to include the other lot.
Correct, I would just like to have that additional language, if we do use that, because if we, if we can't enter into an agreement with the subdivision, we will get access through ACHD off of Hubbard, yeah, and then everyone should be happy.
Okay, because they already have access, and have users' agreement for the one house, but not the other.
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's the, I think that's the concern, and then regarding the cell tower, they do have an easement from Five Mile to access that cell tower for maintenance, we can just have that be the access.
That's, that's, that's an issue for, they're not using, they're violating your privacy.
Sounds like it, yeah.
Yeah, and they should be using the, where they had the original access. Could you state again once, well, do we have that down, what you'd like to add in number?
Chairman, condition number five, just add the words, if access is taken from Broken Wheel Lane.
Then what? So just state the whole sentence.
Oh, I'm sorry, the applicant shall submit an updated road users' maintenance agreement for South Broken Wheel Lane, if access is taken from the lane for the new lot or Lot Two, I think it's Lot Two. Can staff can update that, I guess?
I mean, just not really, yeah, I'll wait till you close it.
Well, okay, is there, is there any, anything else you, so, in other words, you don't need a changed users' agreement for just the one house that's already there, you'd need an updated users' agreement for the new, for the new property.
For the new.
And if you can't get.
And we have to find out if they have legal easement.
Yeah, well, if they can't get that, they don't, they, they.
We're back to square one.
No, if they can't get that, that you can get access off Hubbard, right?
Correct.
Correct?
Or Five Mile, because we're, it's on a corner, so there's two, there's two.
Either one.
Public right-of-ways adjacent to the property.
We have Lee on up, okay.
Chairman, Commissioners, I, I think, it sounds like tabling was something you're interested in, I would say this is a preliminary plat, so we do have the opportunity between now and the final plat to address concerns related to that. I think Mr. Nickel has stated that the new lot does not have access right now, so that's why it would need the updated maintenance agreement. The existing home and the existing lot that would be created associated with that home would have access, because that wouldn't change the number of people using the private drive. So, so again, I think there is legal access, there's just not legal access for the new lot, so it's either update that maintenance agreement, or get direct access to Hubbard Road, and I think those are both workable things that either, one, the neighborhood figures it out, or ACHD grants access to Hubbard, but I don't think there's, I mean, there are two ways forward here.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. I will then close the public hearing on application number 202200072-S, SLN Planning Incorporated. Okay, the public hearing is closed, is there, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, it sounds like we could, we could pass this preliminary plat tonight, and then work on the conditions as the process goes on.
Well, I think I'm inclined to do that, but I want to make sure that the other owners along that road understand a couple of things. Number one, if the owner of the cell tower property is allowing access off the wrong road, that's a code enforcement issue, and neighbors can call code enforcement and take that, take care of that, that's not under our purview here tonight. So that's one issue I want to address, and that should be handled pretty easily, I would think. And so if we did approve this tonight, I would make a condition of approval that the applicant either has to get an updated road users' maintenance agreement, which would be signed by, all of the parties would have to approve, right? So if he didn't get that, then he would have to look at having access, go to ACHD and have access off of Hubbard Road.
Or Five Mile.
Or Five Mile.
Okay.
That's a motion, I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All right, is that clear with the staff? Do we need, you can do that with the, with this motion. Okay.
Do we need to table it to do, revise findings of facts with that condition?
I think that's at your discretion, if you feel comfortable with staff writing that condition, we can do that, if you'd like to see it at a follow-up meeting, we can.
I think it's simple enough, it's straightforward.
No, I, I think it's simple enough.
Okay, so no tabling, we'll just make the motion?
Yep, you made the motion, second motion's moved and seconded. Okay, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, I think we've resolved that. Okay, I will next open the public hearing on application number 202200297-SPR, William Humphries, preliminary plat. We'll hear from staff first.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 202200297-S-PR is a preliminary plat for a three-lot subdivision with a private road in the rural urban transition district. The property is located on South Stewart Road, north of East Hubbard Road, and contains approximately 19.06 acres. Lots one and two, which are the southern lots, will consist of five acres, and Lot Three, which is the northern lot, will consist of 9.05 acres. The three lots will take Frenchan access from the proposed private road. The proposed subdivision complies with Chapter 8-6 of the Ada County Code, since the proposed lots comply with the dimensional standards for the rural urban transition district. The Rossin Canal and Far Lateral lie within the subject property, the Rossin Canal forms the western and southern boundary of the subdivision, and then the Far Lateral cuts through the corner, the northeast corner of the subdivision. The Boise Project Board of Control asserts a federal easement of 40 feet both directions from the Rossin Canal Center Line, and a federal easement of 30 feet both directions from the Far Lateral Center Line. The property is in Marin's area of seeing impact, therefore, the Marin Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ada County is the applicable comprehensive plan. The future land use map designates the property as low-density residential, which is intended for single-family homes at densities of three dwelling units or less per acre. As the three proposed lots will be five acres in size or larger, the application is compatible with the adopted comprehensive plan. There are no neighbor objections or comments to this application, and then the Ada County Highway District stated that this development is estimated to generate 27 additional vehicle trips per day, and three additional vehicle trips per hour in the PM peak hour based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Chip Generation Manual 11th Edition. Staff finds that this application complies with Ada County Code, and the Marin Comprehensive Plan is adopted by Ada County. The Ada County Planning and Zoning Commission, after April 28th public hearing vote, recommend approval of this project to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of our staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Brent, thanks for that report, how far is this from being able to hook into Suez versus having to drill more wells? I notice it's in the nitrate priority area.
So I would, I think this property is probably about two miles, probably from the nearest Suez water line, so I think the nearest Suez water line's near the intersection of Coal and Columbia, and this property is roughly around probably two miles from that intersection.
So they would have to drill a well?
That is correct.
Are there any conditions, additional conditions on drilling the well here in the nitrate priority area that they need to be aware of?
Yeah, I think in this, one thing that obviously the applicant should be aware of is, is with being in the nitrate priority area, you definitely want to have, they would definitely would want to have the water, you know, tested, you know, for nitrates, and then obviously there's ways to kind of remove nitrates from the water, such as reverse osmosis and, and other things that they can be installed in the home to kind of help remove the nitrates, you know, from the groundwater.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions of our staff? Okay, thank you. Do we have the applicant here that would like to speak? Corio Humphries? Okay.
That looks like she's here in person. You have one on Webex and one live?
Yeah, he's, I think he's online, but no, he's done a great job, we have nothing further unless anybody has any questions.
So you're in favor of the application?
She's the applicant. And that's your husband online?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Okay, well, does your husband want to speak? Or is he just listening?
He's unmuted now.
Can you hear me, this is Bill Humphries or William Humphries?
Yes.
Okay, Bill, mainly here in case there were.
Would you like to speak to the application?
Yes, just real briefly, if that would be okay?
Sure.
Yeah, so my name is William or Bill Humphries, 2725 East Mount Etna Drive, Brady, Idaho. I just wanted to be here present in case the, and my wife, obviously, as well, just in case there were any questions, but it's as simple as, we have two acres, or two parcels right now, and hope to make it three, and a private lane, so pretty simple. Unless you have any questions, that's all I had to say.
All right. Are there anyone else, either online or in the audience, that wish to speak to this application? Hearing none, I will close the application, or close the public hearing on application number 202200297-SPR, William Humphries. The public hearing being closed, what is the pleasure of the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, after hearing testimony tonight, reading the report and the review by staff, I think that they comply, and I like to see this low density, so I think that's good, out in these areas, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve project 202200297-SPR, based on testimony and the documents that we have before us.
Is there a second to the motion?
I agree with that, and I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, we will next have for consideration application, I will open the public hearing on application number 202200156-A, Tracy Crane, this is an appeal from the staff's approval, converting an existing structure into a secondary dwelling. We'll give our staff five minutes to, or give our staff as much time you need, to make the presentation, make it clear that, I guess, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this, and this is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Decision's opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I believe this is a appeal of the administrative decision.
Oh, it's an appeal of administrative, okay, all right, all right, so go ahead.
Chairman Commissioners, project 202200156-A is an appeal of a director's approval of a secondary dwelling. The property is located at 780 East Clear Creek Drive in the Clearview Estates subdivision in the rural urban transition district, and contains a total of 4.52 acres. The timeline of the applications related to this project is July 2020, a building permit was submitted to build a new single-family dwelling. In September of 2020, a temporary use application was approved to allow the owners to live in the existing dwelling while building the new one. In November of 2021, a new temporary use application was approved to allow them to continue to live in the existing dwelling during construction. Also in November of 2021, a temporary certificate of occupancy was issued for the new dwelling. In January of 2022, the secondary dwelling application was received, and then approved in March. The proposal is to convert the existing dwelling into a secondary dwelling, the current square footage of the existing dwelling is, as reported by the assessor's office, is 2,310 square feet. This includes garage space that was converted to living space and an unpermitted addition. The approval of the secondary dwelling by the, by the director was conditioned so that the space must be converted to remove any unpermitted additions, convert the garage space back to garage, and have a maximum living area of 900 square feet. This conversion will require a building permit and building inspections prior to final approval and certificate of occupancy. The detailed letter submitted for the appeal on behalf of nine neighboring property owners proposes that there are inconsistencies between the application and the requirements of the Ada County Code. The inconsistencies listed include that the size of the existing dwelling to be converted is larger than what was stated on the original application, that the secondary dwelling is not shown to be incidental or subordinate to the primary dwelling, that the primary dwelling does not have a final certificate of occupancy, that the structure does not meet the applicable requirements of the Ada County Building Code, that the structure is not architecturally compatible with the principal permitted dwelling, and does not use building materials similar in appearance and color, that there is an open code enforcement case against the property, and the board cannot close the enforcement action, and that the structure does not meet the required setback and is non-conforming. The size of the existing dwelling to be converted, again, based on assessor data, is 2,310 square feet, which is larger than the 1,512 square feet noted on the initial application. The applicant provided square footage that does not include an unpermitted addition that is required to be removed, and again, as conditioned, the dwelling must be converted to a maximum of 900 square feet of living space prior to final approval and certificate of occupancy. The existing structure is already incidental and subordinate to the new primary dwelling based on size, the primary dwelling is 8,322 square feet, and again, as conditioned, the secondary dwelling must be updated with siding and color to match that of the primary dwelling. The dwelling is not considered a non-conforming use, as primary and secondary dwellings are allowed uses in the rural urban transition district. The dwelling is considered a non-conforming structure, as it met the required setback at the time it was built, however, it does not meet the current setback. at the time it was built, however, it does not meet the current setback due to the Ada County Highway District holding the right-of-way of the temporary turnaround. This right-of-way was platted as a temporary turnaround to be used until Clear Creek Drive is extended, which it has been. The property owner may request the unused right-of-way from the Highway District at this time. Ada County Code does allow for the enlargement and modification of non-conforming structures if it conforms to the requirements of the Ada County Code. Neighbors have voiced concerns over code violations on the property, stating that the owner is running their business off the property and that they have had people living in the existing dwelling prior to approval. Currently, code enforcement has marked the property as in compliance, and as conditioned, any open code enforcement cases shall be closed prior to construction. The key conditions of this application are that the structure shall be reconfigured to include a maximum of nine-hundred square feet of living space, and the garage shall be converted back to its original use as garage. The secondary detached dwelling siding and color shall be updated to match that of the primary dwelling prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Any open code enforcement cases shall be closed before construction shall take place. The secondary dwelling shall not be used as a rental unit, and either the principal dwelling or the secondary dwelling must be owner-occupied at all times. The secondary dwelling must be occupied by the owner, a member of the owner's family, or an owner's employee. Staff is recommending denial of the appeal and upholding the director's decision, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions?
No, I think that was very thorough. I don't have a printout of what you just went through on those key factors, so we may have you pull that back up later, so keep that handy. Thanks.
Okay. Any que, do you have questions, Commissioner?
What is the open code enforcement case? And what's, do we know the status of that?
Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, the status of any open code enforcement cases is just marked as compliance. We don't hold all of the information on code enforcement cases. That's kept by the Ada County Sheriff's Office.
But that is a condition of approval.
It'd be closed.
Right. Okay. No other questions? All right. Is Tracy Crane here? Okay, you have fifteen minutes, and you'll get a rapid-up light at, with one minute left, okay?
Thank you. Mark Butler, sixteen-seventy-five East Bishop Way. Tracy Crane is here. He's a lawyer, I told him not to speak, but he is here. I'm speaking on Tracy's behalf.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
All right? And we do have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
And Cory's covered most of this, but we'll go through it quickly. This is an appeal of the director's approval for an accessory dwelling unit located at seven-eighty East Clear Creek. This is a vicinity map showing you roughly where the property is, centrally located in Treasure Valley. The Clearview Estates subdivision was platted in December eighth of nineteen-seventy-two. It's a five-acre lot, rural residential subdivision. Some of the lots are smaller. Next. The neighborhood, it's about a half-mile north of Chindon. It's about two miles west of Eagle Road, and it butts the north-south channel of the Boise River. Clearview Estates subdivision is highlighted here in yellow, and it was, it includes, this is a real gem down in here, I've lived here for thirty years and I never went down here. They have river frontage lots, they have view lots, they have water feature lots. By the way, the Joneses' house is beautiful. Water, several water amenities. Most of the homes were built in the seventies. Since two thousand-two, ten of the older homes have been demolished with new homes built. Jones is the first one to try to keep the old home. Next. Who are the appellants? So in green, I've outlined the appellants that we represent. I won't go through all the names here. You can see them. It's one-third of the entire subdivision, and the subject property is outlined in red. Next. Subject property, just a little bit about it. This is an aerial photograph of the subject property showing the new home to the south and the existing home up toward the front, and I understand the non-conforming use issue is not an issue. Sometimes, as you go through the process, which is called discovery sometimes, you find out that what you claimed is not right, and that is, is not right. Staff clarified that for us. Subject property is Jones property, approximately five acres, recently constructed, modern architectural-style home, building permit approved, eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-eight square feet, structure with five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine square feet living area. The existing seventies craftsman-style, twenty-three-hundred-and-ten-square-foot home includes a two-car garage converted, and that home was built in seventy-five. This is the requested ADU of nine-hundred square feet, and it also includes a shop and some other outbuildings, and that's just the county record, because initially, it didn't seem like staff was on board with the county size of being twenty-three-ten, and now they are. Awesome. Next. This is a listing, it just shows, the listing at twenty-four sixty-four square feet. Again, we were trying to show that was larger than what the applicants had claimed at fifteen-hundred. You know, sometimes, real estate agents exaggerate, so they're a hundred-and-fifty square feet too big. Next. Just a little view of the inside of the house, for what it's worth. It's really nice inside, and a couple views of exterior. So the new Jones home built in two thousand-twenty-one is a modern architectural style, elegant design features. As I said, it's beautiful. It's got flat and low-sloping roof lines, substantial glazing, multiple siding materials. You can see the Ada County picture and the picture I took from the adjacent property. The original home, the proposed ADU, plain seventies-style ranch home, adding siding and painting like the new home does not meet the code criteria, it's our opinion. You got to decide. Next. Next. This will be one of those weird ones where things come up. So primarily, the application, in our opinion, stands in contrast with the following. Next. The January sixth, two thousand-twenty-one building permit and zoning certificate were issued requiring removal of the existing dwelling prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Next. The November twelfth, two thousand-twenty-one findings and conclusions for the extension of the temporary use actually had a requirement in there that the applicant and/or owner shall complete the demolition permit prior to the certificate of occupancy being issued for the new single-family dwelling. Now, I understand, I've worked in government twelve years, and I also still work as a consultant with the city of Eagle. Regardless of what was said, the county is allowing occupancy of the new home awaiting your decision. This seems fair. Here's, here's our main issue, issues, and I'll go into more detail. The applicant, application is not in accordance with Ada County Code, Section eight-five-three forty-eight, dwelling, secondary, attached or detached, items one, two, three, and eight. Next. The director.
I'm sorry, can you just tell us what that is that you're?
Uh, next slide. Yep. The director relied on incorrect facts within the ADU. If you look at the findings, this is from the findings, it states that the structure is fifteen-hundred-and-twelve square feet. Now, staff has shown that it's actually twenty-three-ten. That was a big issue for us. Next. Next. So the analysis of the non-compliance with Ada County Code. Next. Understanding that I accidentally referred to ACC eight-three-N-eight-nine, which actually applies to Dry Creek Ranch, if you read that in the letter, that's a mistake, and staff pointed that out early on. Appreciate that. So number one, the secondary dwelling shall be clearly incidental and subordinate to the primary dwelling. That's out of your code. Second, the allowable footprint for a secondary dwelling shall be minimum of nine-hundred square feet, or sixty percent of the footprint of the primary dwelling, whichever's less. Next. Eight, the secondary dwelling shall be architecture, it's almost like we're ignoring this part, but going to the second part with the condition. The secondary dwelling shall be architecturally compatible with the principally permitted dwelling and shall use building materials similar to the home. So there's a condition for the building materials to be similar, but there's no condition for architectural compatibility, and again, that's probably subjective. Next. So this is our opinion. Although staff included a condition to use some similar materials as the new home, there is no condition by staff requiring that the secondary dwelling shall be architecturally compatible with the principal permitted dwelling. Merely adding materials to a rectangular building does not provide a modern design style like the new home. No building elevations were submitted with the application for verification of compliance with code. Approving this application will merely be kicking the can down the road, which cuts impacted neighbors out of the due process required. Next. The Ada County Assessor's records show it's twenty-three-ten, we've already covered this. The applicant's letter said fifteen-twelve. Next. So we're down to number one and number three, which are our main issues. I already went over number three. Number one, the secondary dwelling will not clearly be incidental and subordinate to the primary dwelling as required, but instead will result in a vastly incompatible style of two homes. Next. So you saw this plan that was submitted. It's a roughly sketch, I call them napkin plans, and I've been doing this for thirty-two years, and with over thirty years of experience as a land use planner, I have never seen such an inadequate plan accepted by government for a land use application. It seems like if a person's going to have the ability to have due process, they should be able to see what's being constructed, and that's the big issue to break into this. That's the big issue here is, they're not against them having a home. There is a CCNR lawsuit that's completely separate from this, that's a private matter. With regard to code, they're not against them having a home, they're not against them converting the home. We need housing here. It's a right. There's a neighbor across the street that has one, and you'll see that in a minute. What they would like is an application that shows what the footprint will actually be and what the design will look at, so they can look at it. If we were able to see that, we would be able to say, we've had our right to due process, and it's cool, but kicking it down the road to the building department, who's mostly going to look at structural, we feel it cuts, it cuts us out of the process. I don't think that's fair. Next. Oh, is that it? Could you go back? Does not include any, it's not to scale, it's impossible to verify, it does not include any necessary design, remodel details, building elevations, or actual ADU floor plan dimensions to show compliance with code. Next. Almost done. So just to take a look, this is the existing home compared to the, to the home, and so, I mean, can you imagine just putting siding on here? It doesn't seem like it meets the intent of the code to be architecturally compatible. Next. Now, conversely, right across, close to across the street, you can see the Joneses to the red, this is the Stanger property, which is the upper one where I wrote Stanger. They're the only other approved ADU in this subdivision. There's thirty homes in here. I have one-third of the people who are asking you to, you know, deny this, but it'd be preferable to remand it back to staff and say, give us an accurate floor plan done by an architect or a draftsman, and some elevation so we can look at them. That's all. We'd like it to stay nice. This is a beautiful subdivision. I mean, the Joneses built a beautiful house here. The clients would just like to be sure it's frankly, beautiful, kind of like the house, like the Stangers across the street. If you look at this, it has materials that are the same, but it also has an architectural design style that shows that it's subordinate to the principal home. Same slope roofs, low slope over the porches, same porches, same window materials, same, what do you call those next to the window? Window shutters, same door. It looks really compatible, and that's, that's all we're asking for, is we'd like to see it. I think I'm almost done. I am done, and at the end, I'm going to read through these, but at the end, I say, we ask for your denial, but again, if there's some way, you know, we don't want to hurt these people with the application or cause more work for staff, if there's some way you can remand this back to staff and say, provide the floor plan, I've already said it once, I'll say it one more time, the floor plan and elevation so they can have their due process, we'd really appreciate it. So what do we think needs to be in the application? And then I'll close. We need a floor plan drawn to scale showing size not to exceed nine-hundred square feet. We need a floor plan showing only one bedroom, that's per your code. Need a site plan showing the footprint of the proposed ADU. Need elevation plans drawn to scale detailing modifications so the ADU will be compatible with the modern style of new home. Need building materials and colors called out on the plans. Need, to be skillfully done, not what I call a napkin plan, and I thank you very much and ask you if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of?
Well, I think, I just want to make sure, it took a long time to get there, because you reiterated things that are no longer a concern, so I just wanted to make sure that what you're concerned with at this point is that it's architecturally compatible, using the right materials and design, and you're just looking at making sure that it's resubmitted with the things that you just put on here.
Yes.
And the square footage and all the other things are no longer?
Yes, and something that the, the neighbors could, could see.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seems to make sense. They're going to do it anyway when they decide, and we're not asking for building plans.
Right.
It's pretty cheap to have somebody do, it's a lot cheaper than what these guys are paying me to do this work, it'd have been cheaper to hire an architect, of course, Joneses aren't paying me, cheaper to hire an architect to do a footprint and some elevations.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
All right, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yes.
So, you know, you've got a lot of technical arguments here, and I kind of get where you're coming from, but just looking at it, you know, from a ten-thousand-foot view, I'm looking at this going, I, what's the real harm to the, to the neighbors here? I'm having trouble seeing what the real issue is, why they care, like, what does it really matter what this house looks like? I mean, can you, can you give me something to?
Sure, I get it. And I'll start by saying, I'm a libertarian. People should be able to do whatever the heck they want with the land. However, I'm kind of conflicted because I also work for government. So that puts me toward, the rule of law is so important, and so, we believe the rule of law would allow the neighbors to look at the design and assure that it's compatible like everything they've been building new since two thousand-two. That's it. They would just like to look at it and see that it's compatible, and I think your code calls out for that. I get it, you and I think a lot alike about private property.
Well, sure, I mean, it's, and they might have the right to do that, but, you know, it's kind of hard for me to see what the damage is, or what the negative impact of the neighborhood is, or, again, how it's hurting anybody. So is this just kind of a matter of aesthetics for the neighborhood? They just want everything to look nice?
It's a matter of looking at your code and feeling like, feeling like, believing like, the interpretation of the code is that aesthetics are important, and because of that in the code, we would like you to follow the code. Personally, I think like you. Why do governments even control aesthetics? But on the other hand, if we don't like our codes, which I've changed a lot of codes in Eagle to try to make them better, and then new councils come in and, and make them worse again, if we're, if we're a country of laws, and the law is there, it seems like we should enforce it. If we don't like it, change it, and I think it's there to assure compatibility.
There's obviously some flexibility in the law, that's why we have things like variances, and, you know, it's open to discretion about what constitutes architectural standards, and so, I, I mean, are you looking for them to, does it largely come down to the exterior of the house? Is that what the neighbors want to see?
And the size, they'd like to see, you know, if they could just look, it's, you know, this, marriages fall apart because of lack of communication, and if there was just some communication in here, like, if they had initially showed something and the neighbors felt it was architecturally compatible, we would not be here. We'd deal with the CCNR case separate. So that's all it is. We just don't feel as compatible architecturally, or there's nothing that shows if it will. They're going to probably get up and say, it'll look great, and I, I would have to say, it probably will, looking at what they did with their house, but it's a dark cloud right now, and it seems like it could have been easily cleared up with design plans being submitted that somebody could look at.
So how do you modify it, being an existing structure, to make it what the neighborhood wants to see? I mean, I'm not, I'm not a builder, so what, what can be done?
Well, we don't really know what the neighbor wants to see until we see a design style. Maybe when they put architectural features on there, then it looks compatible. You know, it, it might be that some roof line needs to be changed slightly.
Well, that would be the next question. Isn't compatibility rather subjective?
Very subjective.
That's what it seems to me like.
Very subjective.
Yeah, it's very subjective. It's compatibility with the neighborhood is, and, and some of the other issues that you, you brought up, the, the nine-hundred square feet, the, I mean, it, doesn't it seem to you as though if the garage is turned, the garage is converted to living space, which contributed to the twenty-three-hundred or whatever it is, if all that's done and it's back to, to a nine-hundred-square-foot home, that takes away a lot of your issues, does it not?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Again, it all comes down to, it seems like the code requires architectural compatibility, why it wasn't something shown that people could see? That's all.
Yeah, well, and I get. Yeah. And I get that. That's a, I don't know if I like that napkin drawing either.
I get it.
But, yeah. All right.
Thank you for your questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a number of people that want to speak to this.
Can I hand out the PowerPoints presentation for your record?
Yeah, yeah, please, yeah.
But we'll have Tracy do that.
Hand it over, yeah, give them for the record, yes.
Do I give them to her?
Give them, we've got them here.
It's left company. He's not just want to copy yourself. Or do you want to?
Yeah, that's fine.
I didn't trust the lawyer to hand out copies. I would follow an instruction.
Chairman, this presentation will be entered into the record as an additional exhibit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. We have a number of people that want to speak to this issue. I might remind you that we will give, each person who wants to speak to a three minutes, please don't repeat. If somebody else has already said something that you're going to talk about, please don't repeat, because we have heard it once. If you'll limit to three minutes.
Chairman, sorry to interrupt. I believe it's the applicant's turn to speak next.
Yes, the original applicant.
That's correct, yes.
Yes. And then we'll give you a rebuttal after the testimony. So if the applicant wants to speak?
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Thanks for hearing all of this tonight. My name is Peggy Bresky. I have Peggy Bresky Land Planning and Consulting. The respondent pulled me in a little bit late in the game. They were trying to scramble, trying to figure out how to answer to some of the questions that were stated in the appeal letter. For those individuals who are not in land use or land development or construction or any type of situation like that, a lot of the code can be confusing and can be a little intimidating. And so, relative to that, her attorney referred her to myself. And so, I do, I've been in land development for a long time, and I'm actually an expert witness for the Idaho State Attorney General's Office with the ITD Division. So I do a lot of analysis and report writing for situations such as this. It sounds like, based on the appellant's presentation tonight, it really has been kind of zeroed in on what the concerns are. I had points and responses written for every single point in their appeal letter and in their land use analysis letter. So I'm going to try to be as brief as I can as the representative for the applicant, the original applicant, that I'm just referring to tonight as the respondent responding to the appeal. And I'll try to speak slowly. I tend to get kind of ahead of myself, but at the same time, I don't want to lose time and run out of time and not cover something that's important. I'm going to go to where the end, the very end of the presentation, where commissioners were asking some clarifying questions of the appellant, as I think that those are critically important questions to be answered upfront and which might save some time in our presentation. But I want to, I want to ask respectfully of commissioners that I am allowed to touch on a few other points that were stated in their appeal letter and that were responded to in our response letter and analysis, because they are very important points and pertinent to the overall situation that we have in front of us tonight. So with regard to the end of the presentation and commissioners' very, I mean, honest questions, what's the actual impact to the neighborhood? What's the problem? You know, the conditions of approval already address the elevation, what it's to look like, you know, literally, pulled literally out of code, verbatim, is what is listed in the director's decision and what is listed in the conditions of approval for the original approval of the ADU. I think that that in and of itself solves the problem in that the punishment for not, or the consequence for not making it match architecturally with finishes, et cetera, which as everyone here had agreed and discussed briefly, it is a subjective situation. But the conditions of approval very clearly call that out. Obviously, building permits will be submitted, official, formal building drawings will be submitted, including elevations, et cetera, which will show that it will be in compliance. Appellants say that there was a lack of communication to neighbors. They want the footprint to be smaller. For the rule of law, the neighbor's due process was not applied and not allowed. I would speak to that to say that due process was followed, notice was sent to affected parties and property owners, which officially is 300 square feet, or rather, 300 linear feet away from the subject property. There's only one individual, a landowner, in that subdivision that is officially, as by defined by code, an affected person. The remaining eight are not, but it's their subdivision. They want it, you know, they're all involved parties. So I understand that, and I get that. Respondent has made numerous attempts over the last two years to open conversations and begin a dialogue with the neighbors with regard to all of the different process, all of the different applications that it take, it took to go from purchasing the land to building the new home, to converting the original dwelling to an accessory dwelling unit. None of the neighbors would open or engage in a dialogue with her. Not at all. So where their argument of lack of communication and their due process, and they didn't get to see anything, I think is really, and it's a moot point. It's up for dispute. Again, it's subjective. I know that, coming in a little bit late into this process, I didn't present, prepare a slideshow. I didn't have time, but I do know the entirety of the background of the process. And so I'd like to speak a little bit about that, if I may. The staff report was excellent. The points that were brought up by commissioners were narrowed down to really, how is it going to look? How is it architecturally compatible? Why would they approve something based on a napkin sketch? And the reason for that is because the appellant parties, the neighbors, have made this a very difficult process for the respondent, for the owners of this property, from the moment they purchased the property and applications started being submitted to the agencies for approval for building their home. They've called in more than, I did a FOIA request. I did a public information request, as these neighbors have called in and made countless, literally countless, calls to the Code Enforcement Agency trying to file complaints every time they sent a Code Enforcement Officer out. The Code Enforcement Officer that went out most of the time, as I think they're territorial, actually sent an email today. He wanted to be here to testify on behalf of the respondent. When I did a public information request, asking exactly how many complaints were filed against this home by whomever, they said that there were too many to count and that they couldn't provide that information at this time within the three-day period, and that based on the fact that there were too many to count from different sources, they had to get back to me, and they were opening an investigation into how many complaints there were that were filed. And I'll read this to you in a moment, but my point is, is the extent to which the neighbors have gone against every application that this, that the respondent has made to try to make this home their generational living environment has been beyond ridiculous. So when I look at and go over the staff report, I'm going to go, I'm going to not even discuss the other points that they brought up, but I will say that the new primary dwelling, it does have a permanent certificate of occupancy. It's Exhibit Number Two, that was attached to the late exhibit, which was my report. And I apologize that the report, the exhibit was late because I was pulled in kind of at the 11th hour and had to rush to put something together for them. But they do have a permanent certificate of occupancy, and that's what the ADU application is for, where it talks about, a final certificate of occupancy may not be issued for the ADU until the process is complete, which is what we're in tonight. Page four of the staff report discusses, again, since we zeroed in on what the issue is, I'm going to focus in on that. Appellant parties have, the appellant letter said that there were open code enforcement cases and that they were in violation. There is no open code enforcement case. There is no open violation. There actually has been research into complaints, but there was never a violation filed for this address. Now, when the, because of the process that had been going on with so many phone calls in for code violations, at one point, the respondent applied for a home occupancy permit because the surrounding neighbors called in and said, they're running a business, they're running a business out of the home. This was during COVID. Out of the 60 people in our office, 55 of us were working from home. None of us filed for a home occupation permit. They said to her, you've had so many complaints against you, you should probably do this to protect yourselves. You should probably submit for that. So she said, oh, okay, yeah, absolutely. The respondent is probably the most compliant individual that I've worked with, and I've worked with developers. I've worked in government. I work, I'm a contract planner for three different cities. So I've seen both sides of it, and she is probably the most compliant individual I've seen. She applied for a home occupancy permit because she wanted to follow the rules, and she wanted to avoid further disputes with the neighbors. The neighbors appealed that application for her, and it was denied. So she opened up a small office in Meridian, rather than working from her home office at home, she opened a little office, rented an office in Meridian to conduct her phone calls and business there. They're a business owner. So the extent to which the appellant parties have tried to interfere and have submitted appeals and submitted issues and submitted code violation complaints, by the end of it, when she submitted this ADU application, they did not want to expend the funds to have official and formal elevations drawn up, architectural elevations drawn up, because they weren't sure that they were going to win the appeal. I mean, they got the approval of the ADU. They were glad. Within that date, that appeal period, the appeal was filed. Knowing the process as it had gone on for the past several years, staff at various departments at various levels understood what she was faced with. They told her, we're going to put in conditions of approval. You're going to have to bring that up to stand. She said, I will. I plan on it. I mean, her taste is exceptional. You can see what the house was that they built. She has planned on it from the beginning. As a matter of fact, staff, seven staff and the respondent, before she purchased the property, went and did a walk of the property while it was up for sale and said, this is what I want to do. I want to live in this little one while we build our dream home that we've been saving for over two decades for. When we're done, we're going to renovate and remodel this little home. We're going to move my dad in. My dad is a retired pastor, and we want him to have the dignity of aging in place. Aging in place right now is huge. I'm currently working on a new comprehensive plan for the city of Cascade. They have a grant for integrating independent living and aging in place for the population. It's big in planning right now, and it's critical, especially in this housing market. So that was her plan from the beginning. They lined out, this is what's going to have to happen. Current code said this may not be an allowable thing with the ADU being in the front. So at that same time, I'm trying to hurry, at that same time, respondent started having conversations with the city of Eagle to possibly annex her property into the city of Eagle because Eagle's code would allow for a front ADU and a rear primary. So she was working with both agencies in tandem to ensure that she was in compliance with all necessary code, but so that she could have the home with her father in the front with her five children as a generational family. Okay? So the fact that she did not submit formal elevations and formal building plans were a result of, I don't know if I'm even going to get this approved. So I can't spend the money right now, but put it in conditions of approval, I'll follow it. And she will. When we discussed the fact that, you know, they had a lot of issues, the appellant had a lot of issues with how the director applied code, I went through and I reviewed everything. I've won an award for writing a comprehensive plan for the city of Mountain Home. I've won an award, I'm doing, I know what it takes for community planning. Additionally, I was over a decade in residential building, interior design, and project management. So I know design. I've been on that site. There are a lot of conflicting information out there with regard to depending upon whose records you look at. You look at the MLS, that's never accurate. They have a, if you read my report, you'll see that they're trying to sell something. What is shown on the county assessor's website is inaccurate. It is definitely not 2,300 square feet or 24. My home is 2,300 square feet, and it is certainly not a match for that. So much of that property has unpermitted square footage that is going to be removed. The respondent knows that the code requires 900 square feet or less of living space, and it will be adjusted to that. They will submit formal plans, elevations, footprints, and show how the structure will be modified to do so. I've been in it. I know how it's structured. It's a typical ranch. I know that the tresses and where everything is going to be structurally. They could absolutely remove square footage without an issue. It is absolutely possible and feasible, and they will do that. So if that is what they're pinning the appeal on, it is a non-issue as it is a condition of approval, and the consequence would be, for not doing so, they won't get their certificate of occupancy, they won't get their ADU final approval after the tentative approval. I mean, it's as simple as that. Respectfully, may I take just two more additional minutes beyond 15?
You're out of time. You have 10 seconds.
Okay. So in closing, the respondent has done everything required and requested by staff at the county.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any questions?
Oh, yeah, I stand for questions. Please.
Yes, please, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So the respondents, the owners of the property, the addition that's going to be taken off, was that addition added on illegally?
Yes, one of them, a portion of it was. The garage was unpermitted, turned into living space. There was a sunroom added onto the house that was done illegally, and it's going to be torn off.
Both of those were done illegally by the owner, the applicant?
The prior owners.
Prior owner, the previous owner.
Previous owners.
Previous owner, not this owner.
Correct. She bought it as is that way.
Okay, okay. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
So you saw the bullet points that the appellant listed. Are you saying that those are all covered by the?
They absolutely are. And my report came in as the late exhibit. It literally puts there every one of the points that they put up in the left column, and it has a response where much of them are inaccurate, respectfully, and with our responses referencing appropriate code and referencing definitions. So yes, every single one of the points, I can say, if I'm, I know I'm on the record, but I mean, if I had a Bible in my hand and, you know, was raising my right hand, every one of those points has been addressed and is either inaccurate or not applicable to this project because the appellant and their land analysis, their land professional, they were not privy to a lot of the information that was going on with all of the applications. And so, yes, every item, every bullet point in that letter is addressed.
So there were a lot of bullet points, but I'm kind of getting the feeling that this largely revolves around the aesthetics of the exterior.
Sounds as such, yes, which to me is not an adverse effect.
But do you have a plan to, I mean, why don't you address that? Is there a plan to remedy that specifically?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Her builder, I'm assuming it's going to be the builder that built the other house, will be putting together elevations of drawings, formal drawings, architectural drawings, to show exactly how the house is going to be changed. We can do that on a, the appropriate level for submittal. Their appeal letter asked for technical drawings, buildable drawings. Well, it's too early for that at this point. But yes, they can submit and will submit if the appeal is approved, or if the appeal is denied and the original ADU approval is upheld, the applicant is ready, original applicant respondent, is ready to submit elevations, floor plan drawings to show how the home will be renovated and what the end result of the home will be.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question. Why do you think it's, it would be too early to have submitted those? That's what we're here for tonight. And we basically have a napkin drawing.
That's a great question, and I wasn't, I was just going right to this. So I'm glad that you asked, Commissioner. Because she didn't want to expend the funds to have that done if there was a chance that her original approval was denied.
I'm going to stop you right there. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, what steps have both parties taken to resolve this before bringing it to us? It sounds like the two of you could have sat down and gone point by point over.
I would completely agree with that, Commissioner. That's an excellent point. Respondent has made multiple attempts at reaching out to neighbors. One of the neighbors in the appellant parties, Mary Kay, it's immediate neighbor, I don't know her last name, Denton. Mary Kay Denton is the immediate neighbor. They have had some conversation. One of the neighbors in the appellant parties, Mary Kay, it's immediate neighbor, I don't know her last name, Denton. Mary Kay Denton is the immediate neighbor. They have had some conversation. She has made a, respondent has made attempts overall to, to open a dialogue, and they have refused to have a dialogue with her. She has tried to go through the, the county, go through staff. And the reason the staff were fine with the napkin drawing was because they knew of all of the complaints and appeals and all of the things that the appellant parties had done to interfere. And so they said, okay, we know there, there's some discrepancy in the square footage. We're gonna allow you to submit this, but be warned, you're gonna have to submit more formal drawings for your building permit, right? So, but she has tried to do so.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Here, we have a number, a number of people that want to testify.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may.
Yes.
It looks like both parties have agreed that it's come down to, it's boiled down to appropriate architectural compatibility in materials and needing to have some, some formal design with elevation and floor plans. So I would encourage everyone to stick to testimony just regarding that. And I'm getting a lot of head nods. Okay, I think we all agree. Thank you.
Okay, we will, I guess we'll first hear from Charity, Charity? Is it Charity Jones? That's the first one signed up here. So you have three minutes, Charity. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Charity Jones. I'm actually the property owner. Thank you guys so much for your time. I'm so relieved to hear that information after their full report that went through so much. We've spent so much time on all their other bullet points. Architecturally speaking, two things. The, I wasn't being cheap. That's not why I did not actually submit any professional drawings or whatnot. We actually had a meeting, and I had a roomful for the, the pre-application meeting or whatever that happened. And I said, what exactly do you want from me? And they literally gave me exact instructions. You need to get this graph paper. You need to go ahead and give us a drawing of what the home is going to look like. You can do it. You can do it with a piece of, you know, graph paper and a pencil and, and go ahead and write it out for us. So I just followed instructions, frankly speaking. If you guys need anything further, I'm more than happy to do so. However, architecturally speaking, the home, as, as stated, we did not do the improvements that were not permitted. We purchased the home that way. And part of that was that there was like this extra room in the back that is rotted out and falling over and needs to be cut off. It's not complex like the back home is. It is really, really simple. It's important to note, one of the things that I did discuss, because I had heard all these arguments and I understand these arguments. You cannot see the two homes with your eyes in one eye shot at all. There is absolutely nowhere on the street that you can go and see both the back home and the front home at the same time. So, you know, to what you stated, architecturally similar, A is going to be subjective to whoever you are speaking to. And I did discuss that in my meeting, my pre-application meeting. We discussed all these points, and, and we were very thorough to make sure that we discussed these points. They agreed that that's going to be subjective. Further, you know, we do have CCNRs in the subdivision, and in those CCNRs, it states that there's supposed to be an architectural board. I searched and searched and searched for some sort of architectural board that I could go to, that I could submit these plans to. There is no such thing. There is no architectural board. Mary Kay Denton, who is the direct neighbor next to me, her and I had text thread back and forth, and I asked her if she would invite these neighbors, the people who are so angry that have never come and knocked on my door. I'm a small-town girl. I grew up in Emmett, Idaho. You go trick-or-treating and get invited in for chili and cornbread, and you go, and you talk to these people, and you trust them, and you, you share sugar and all the things that neighbors are supposed to do. And that's the community I thought I was moving into. Yes, it is aesthetically absolutely beautiful, and it is a gem, and I want to keep it that way. But, but nobody would talk to me. They are completely shut off from me. So I don't know.
If I understand you correctly, you said that there, there are, in your restrictive covenants, which is your CCNR, there is supposed to be an architectural control committee?
Yep. And there is nobody. That, it's so old and so gone. There's no HOA, there's no board, there's no architectural committee, there's no dues. There's nothing there to where I could communicate. And understand, some of these homes are gated. The only neighbor that I knew had been there for a very long time who had communication with all of the other neighbors, I invited them over through her. Please come over. Let's look at this, let's talk about this. Tell me what your concerns are. Nobody would respond. Absolutely nobody.
Okay, any questions for the?
Not at this time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, we, Matthew, something.
Matt Wiskowiak.
Oh, Matthew Wiskowiak, there you go.
It's bullish, it's not supposed to make sense.
Okay. Okay, if you could say your name for the record again.
Uh, my name is Matt Wiskowiak. I live at 10836 West Treeline Court in Boise. I am here today to, my, hello, my name is Matthew Wiskowiak. I'm here on behalf of my wife, Hillary, who was unable to attend due to some unforeseen circumstances. But she wanted me to speak on her behalf, and this is what she requested that I share. Hello, everybody, my name is Hillary. I am a licensed realtor and have been practicing real estate, serving our amazing communities in our incredible state just shy of 20 years. I was asked to provide comparative market value information. Please note that this is not reflective of any personal opinion on the matter of the public hearing at hand, but to simply provide professional comparative market valuation on parse, on the parcel, consisting of 2.6, 2.61 acres with existing residents changing the size. The valuation is considering only the, the one of the two legal descriptions that are at that address. In my professional assessment, the most recent comparable properties, considering age, square footage, lot size, features, location, et cetera, the residence and associated 2.61 acres has a current market analysis of 810, 810,000 to 900,000, with the closest and most recent comp coming in at 8799, which was sold within the last two weeks in May. Detailed information on the comparables can be provided if needed. So that was what I had.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Elizabeth Jones. Okay, if you could say your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Elizabeth Jones. I don't really know what to say, she just signed us in, other than I know my, she's my sister-in-law. And I know her taste is about tech killer, and I can't imagine she would make the front house look just as beautiful as the rear house. And any of her, our family would agree to that. And it's just crazy, the stuff that they've had to go through just to even process as far as they've gotten.
Okay, well, okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. I'm going to request again, if you, we've narrowed it down to the only thing in contention is the, is the aesthetics of the property. All the, the applicant and the, and the respondent agree that all the other issues have been, have been, have been handled. Is that correct? Yeah, it is correct, yeah. So if you could, if you could keep your, your comments just to the exterior aesthetics of the property, because that seems to be the only contention right now.
And you don't necessarily have to testify if you signed up. We can just express yes or no on the question.
Yeah, like, like, okay. But I'm taking them in the list as they, as they appear on, on the sheet. Is it Chrissy Jones? Or Cece, or?
She's fine.
Okay. Mickey Hemms, Hemmsmerger?
Chairman, always, thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Butler. Okay. Justice Jones.
No.
Okay. Sepia Jones. Okay. Noble Jones. All right. Leg, is it Legend Jones? Okay. Dustin Jones. Okay, you're waving, all right. Okay, now we're down to, again, I'm just taking these in the order. Bob Vober, Bobler? Did you want to speak? Tina Vorbeck? Todd Gill? Okay. Mickey Hemms, Hemmsinger, Hemmsmeyer? Oh, yeah. Okay. And Sharon Butler? Bud and April Dillon? Okay. Okay, state your name for the record.
Brad Dillon.
Oh, Brad. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
That's okay. Chairman and Ada County Commissioners, my name is Brad Dillon. My address is 410 East Clear Creek. I'm just down the street from the Joneses. Have never met them, and I don't know what all the banter is back and forth, but I haven't been associated with that. But what I do know is that when they put in the application to build their new house, a condition of that application was to tear down the existing house and the existing barn. So somewhere along that process, that, a new application was filed to keep the existing house. So that, that is why I am here today. And I simply would like to know, like the others have stated, what is going to happen with the existing house? What it's gonna look like? If it's gonna comply with the Ada County square footages that are put in place in Ada County Code? And what it's going to look like? Because in the code, it says that it needs to look similar to the new house. If they comply with that, great. I, I think that's, that's awesome, and that's all I'm looking for with you folks to hopefully take that position.
Okay, I'd have a question for you. It appears as though your, your homeowners association has gone defunct. And you might, you might want to resurrect that and have an architectural control committee like you already had.
I'm not aware that the committee is defunct.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know either, but I guess that's a, that's a subject.
That's the testimony we received.
But the, all of the subjectivity that we're talking about tonight is removed with some building plans and some drawings of what the house will look like when it's refurbished.
Exactly, and you have a local, a local method to resolve that, which is your architectural control committee. That's what your subdivision ordinances, or your subdivision restrictive covenants call for, I think.
I, I can't speak to that, but what I can speak to is what the Ada County Code says. And the Ada County Code says that the House has to comply to that, and that's why I'm up here tonight.
And isn't that the, the part of the conditions of approval?
Chairman, the application is conditioned to require siding materials and colors similar to the primary dwelling.
No architectural design?
No.
Is that not in our code?
The code requires it to be compatible.
Pictures remove all subjectivity. Picture's worth a thousand words. So just like to see it, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Brad, Chair. I have a question. So, I mean, if you were presented with a, a design, I mean, I guess, would you? My question is, you know, if you say, well, that's not good enough, and then they gotta bring back another one, I mean, how, is, how picky are you gonna be? Like, how, what, what are you looking for in this design to, to satisfy your issue?
I, I guess just something that we can actually see. We haven't given, been given anything to be able to make a proper decision. So I, I'm, I'm not looking for them to move mountains or anything like that. It's just something to, to take a look at. Something to, to, to be able to say, okay, well, I guess it's gonna look similar to the other one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, we have anyone online that wants to speak?
I have one person, Larry Sandusky.
Larry Sandusky? Okay, are you online, Larry? Okay, Larry?
I am.
Could you state your name again for the record?
Larry Sandusky. I'm at 7602 North Canyon Drive. I am two properties away from the Joneses. And I've lived here for over 25 years. No resonators ever caused this amount of concern, by the way. There is an effort by Ms. Sandusky to make the neighborhood look like a punitive organization. In fact, it's not. It's just a neighborhood trying to come to grips with an effort to, what we regard as overdeveloped the property. But what's important is we were robbed of the opportunity to object to the building of a, of the new home by the specification that the old one would be torn down. Everyone was comfortable. Then it, then that didn't happen, and it's been approved. And that's in addition to this giant warehouse from which the applicant ran a business prior to COVID. It wasn't limited to this COVID, in which Ada County Commission stepped in and, and denied them a business license.
Please stick to the issue at hand. Can you stick to the issue at hand? It's not code enforcement.
Yes. I just resent the neighborhood being characterized as so punitive. In fact, and, and the applicant is smug white, that's not true. But we are concerned, because we don't have an opportunity to review the real architectural drawings of the, of the building. And we were robbed of that opportunity by, by the county approving something that can only be viewed as a napkin drawing.
Okay. Thank you.
Serving their rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is all I have. Are there others that I'm not aware of? Okay. You get five, five minutes for rebuttal.
I won't need that. Thank you, Commissioner Beck, members of the board. I want to say a couple of things right up front, and I'll be quick. The CCNRs are not an issue here. There was never a homeowners association. So CCNRs are being litigated separately. There was never a homeowners association. Their CCNRs with regulations.
Does regulation have, have an architectural control committee?
Yes.
But they're not operative?
Correct. Yeah, what, what, what the people have done is gone door to door. Now, one of the things I want to say is really important, actually, two things, just from my own personal. There's a bunch of, I went out to the property with a guy named Tom Moore. And I don't see where these neighbors have been caustic. Tom Moore, I think, has been caustic. As soon as I found out he was caustic, I cut off all communication.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would please stick to the issue.
Yeah, we don't want to get involved in personalities, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I know, it's just a bunch of caustic stuff that was said. So we're gonna set all that stuff aside. Good, it's all red herring stuff. So they've said that they are gonna do plans. Jared Sherburne did their building plans. He's a great builder. What we're asking for is that we would just like to see building plans. That's all. As Brad Dillon said, without seeing it, we don't know what it's going to be. And that's what it comes down to.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I love your staff, I have to say that. Because there was some stuff about us saying bad stuff about staff. I always thought Leon should run for governor.
Leon? Didn't know you're political. Okay. So that's your, your wrap-up. Are there, before I close the hair, the public hearing, are there, there, do we have any questions? Or from the staff or otherwise?
Well, question to staff. I mean, if we were to impose an additional condition that they'd have to come up with the, the plans and the architectural drawings prior to the conditional use being granted, how, how would we go about doing that? I mean, would we, would we?
I think we can talk about that when we dialogue.
We can talk about that.
On how to do that.
Okay. I will then close the public hearing on application 202200156A, Tracy Crane. Okay, the public hearing's been closed. It's up to the commission now. What's the pleasure of the board?
Let me go first?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I think that we heard a lot of testimony here tonight. Much of it really not relevant, at the end of the day, to what the, both parties agreed is the issue. And I think that this is pretty easily remedied. What I would like to see, Mr. Chair, is I do think that everyone, including our staff and, and our board and neighbors, need to see a real drawing with a real building plan, elevations, et cetera, that shows that they're abiding by the code, so the materials and the architectural design are compatible. However, I don't feel that this board needs to have verbal additional testimony on that drawing. What I'd like to see is the applicant submit the professional plan for the design of the house and submit that to staff and to. house and submit that to staff and to the board. We'll table this, give it 30 days, and I think that will allow everyone that wants to, within the neighborhood, to go ahead and have access to that plan. We can somehow set that out, so you can give us then feedback, written feedback, but we're not going to have verbal testimony again. But we would like to hear your feedback in writing. Then we can look at that along with the staff, and we can make that decision, because we're not allowed, I mean, we're not allowed, but we're not going to open this up for every single person's preference about what they think is architecturally correct or not. So, that'll be up to us. But that gives everyone a chance to weigh in. So that's what I would recommend.
And that would, that would also comply with one of the conditions of approval, would it not?
Chairman, it would comply with the code in requiring that it be architecturally compatible.
We may need to add that as a condition of approval, because it wasn't in the written one. It was just the building materials and color. So I think we'll add a condition of approval that'll be architecturally compatible.
Okay, then we'd have to ask our director, what date would you like it table to?
So, Mr. Chairman, the next hearing would come too fast, which is actually next week, so we'd probably be looking at July 13th would be the next, the next hearing.
Well, let's make sure that she has an opportunity to get with her builder, or whoever she's having design this, you know, to have enough time. How much time do you need?
I can have it by next week if I have to wait until July. We can't wait that long.
But we don't need, we don't need to do it on our next public hearing. We could do it on OBM or another meeting of the board.
Yeah, let's do it in OBM, to allow people to, to take a look at it, have it be submitted and then get feedback.
We can table it till when, Mr. Beck?
Let's do three weeks.
Two weeks?
Three.
Well, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there is a, appears to be an open business meeting on June 14th.
Okay.
June 14th in an OBM?
Now, so I, I understand the, what we're talking about here. We don't have a motion yet, do we?
No, I just talked about what kind of motion.
Right, we don't have a motion. So, if we table this till June 14th, give the applicant enough time to, to provide some professional drawings, and then provide the drawings to the appellant's of the, so they'll have a chance to look at it as well. And they can only provide written testimony to us.
And it needs to be within probably two days, 24 hours, 48 hours of the, of the OBM.
And then we will provide, we'll have a final wrap-up. We'll only take written comments on the, on the design itself and for, for June 14th. Okay, do we have a motion?
Do I need to do anything other than just table it with those conditions we just read? Or do I need to reject this appeal?
Until June 14th, but then also I would like to stay.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to table 202200156A to June 14th during our open business meeting, to allow the original applicant, the owner of the property, time to have a professional rendering, formal building plan showing elevation, architectural compatibility, including materials, to be submitted to this board, probably no later than June 10th. That way, our staff can get that back out to the neighbors and give them a couple of days to submit written testimony only, to be in by 5:00 PM on the 12th, June 12th.
Okay, I've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that. I, I think it's a reasonable compromise. I think this gives people the opportunity to, to take a look at the designs, and I would just encourage all the neighbors to be reasonable in their assessment. As we discussed, there's a lot of, you know, open interpretation about what constitutes architectural standards, but I would love to see this be resolved and not go to court, because it feels like this is on the verge of going to court, and I think life's too short for lawsuits. So, I think if everybody can work together, we can come up with a good compromise, and that's my second.
Commissioners, before we go a little further, June 12th is a Sunday.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. So let's have it in on that Friday. What's the Friday?
The 10th.
The 10th.
The date, that's the deadline there for submitting them. So if, if the residents are only given 48 hours to review, and it's submitted on the 10th, they would need, what, the 13th and the 14th, which push past the meeting.
So if we have it in on the 10th, that'd give them the whole weekend to review? Yeah, 10th, I think the 10th will be fine. The 10th should be fine. They'll have the whole weekend to review it. And it'll be, they can submit any written comments to us on Monday and, what's the date? What's the day of the 14th? What's the 14th? Is that a Wednesday?
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. Okay. So let's, so let's back that up then. Let me get my calendar out here. So we can table it at June 14th? Okay, so June 14th in OBM. So if we could have the drawings in by June 8th, and that would give neighbors the 9th and the 10th to review and submit, even Monday as well, to submit any written testimony, and then we will hear it on the 14th. Okay, June 8th. And make sure that the original applicant knows that.
Sure.
Okay. June 8th.
All right. So, restate your motion then.
Do I need to restate the whole thing?
Well, I think so, because we, because that, you didn't amend it. Let's just restate the motion.
Yeah, I just go, I'm going to go ahead and restate that we're going to table project 202200156A to, again, June 14th, to allow, and we'll be hearing that in open business meeting, and we would like for the original applicant to submit her professional building plans and drawings, including elevation, on June 8th. That'll give neighbors June 9th and 10th, as well as that Monday, if they need it, to submit written testimony only. And we will then take it up and, and hear it on the 14th.
Second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.